I'm sure.
There wasn't that. Wasn't even close. So I am sorry. Okay. At least, at least there is that. Yeah.
To make through the issue. Ten o'clock meeting. And it's like, oh, there's a winner.
Well, therefore.
Okay, let's get started. We'd like to welcome everyone to our South Weaver City Council meeting tonight at six P M. Today's Tuesday, February the twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. We're going to begin with the pledge of allegiance from Councilman Windsor, and then we'll have a prayer by Councilman Halversen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Art your father in heaven. If we come before thee this evening, we're very grateful for the opportunity to gather here in our wonderful city and as friends and neighbors, and we ask for thy spirit to be with us that we may be able to discuss the matters at hand, and that we may be able to do so with an open mind and a calm demeanor. Father, we're thankful for all that we've been blessed with, the water and the moisture which we've received. We're thankful for the firefighters and our military and our police officers and all that they do on our behalf. We ask thee to watch over and protect them that they may return home in safety. Again, we're thankful again for what we have, and we love the name and say things in the name of the Savior Christ.
Thank you very much. Okay. To begin tonight, before we have our public comments, we're going to have a few comments from our mayor tonight. To get us started, we've got a couple of items on the agenda tonight that I think we need, I would like to discuss before we get into our public comments or any presentations at all. So if you'll bear with me for just a few minutes, we realize we've got an item on here tonight that could stir things up here in the city, and that is not what we are wanting to do by any means. This landowner has every right and has come to the city and approached the city. It's not the city reaching out to anyone on this annexation property. They have come to us and they have that right to come and present that to us. And we will listen to that, and this is the very beginning of anything that transpires as far as annexation of any kind into the city. There's a lot to go forth from here. There's going to be, if this is decided that it's a possibility, there's going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of dialogue, and a lot that's going to transpire before any annexation takes place. The last thing that I want to hear is after I leave this meeting today and wake up in the morning to see on social media a text or an email saying that the city has put this road back on the agenda to push into Leighton. That is the last thing that we are discussing or wanting to do, and I can guarantee you that not only are we going to have dialogue from this landowner and from the city, but the citizens of this city will also be involved in this as much as anyone else. And so all of you need to be aware of that and to trust your city council and your mayor that we will do the right thing. And we'll begin this dialogue tonight and see where it goes from there. This will not be development driven. This will be something that all three parties agree to and want before it takes place. So just wanted to get that out and everyone be aware of that, and hopefully this will run smoothly and everything will be to everybody's benefit. We want to benefit the landowner, the city, and the citizens. So know that that's what we are about. So with that being said, we'll open this up for public comments at this time. If you've got some public comments, we would invite you to come up to the podium. State your name and the city in which you reside, and the council will not remark to your comments, and you have three minutes to make your comments.
My name is Brett Paul. I live in South Weaver. You've seen me here a time or two over the years. I'm here for the same issue this time as the other times. This is about pollution. But this time it's concerning the annexation property. If you look at the nineteen ninety eight record of decision for Opeluma Unit, you'll see that the pollution from the Opeluma unit goes two hundred and twenty feet north and northeast, which will uncover a large part of this property, twenty-two hundred feet north and northeast. So it's polluted. Our ground is right adjacent to it. We're neighbors, and every bit of our ground there is polluted, every bit. Various kinds of things, but a lot, every one of them, superfund level pollution. You need to know that. So what I'm saying, it is a bare minimum besides the road and issues like that. Before some developer comes in and says we need to do that, they should be required to have a phase three environmental audit to measure the potential ramifications of having that pollution there. And the cost remediated and how well people could live there, if they could live there, how much danger they'd be in. Do a complete phase three environmental audit. I think sometimes that people don't realize that there is a record of decision, but you can pull it up on the Internet in five minutes and read all this stuff. People shouldn't do that. Also, they should look up the twenty fifteen statement of significant differences where it says there's not an inch square inch of pollution in South Weaver that's been remediated yet. You guys have managed to create quite a few polluted subdivisions, but there's not one of them that isn't still polluted. And every person that lives there, every new law owner is a potential responsible party with all the strict liabilities and other obligations that that entails. I'll be bringing up here in another few weeks, some more stuff on that. But for now, thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Brett.
Oh, didn't that poke the bear? First, I want to say thank you. My name's Amy Mitchell. I'm here in South Weaver nineteen twenty-three, Duran Drive. I want to say thank you to you guys for bringing this up. Mayor, thank you for your words. I think that's a great reminder for all of us. And I want to say a big thank you to Angie for helping resolve an issue in our neighborhood with parking of trailers and blocking intersections. So I appreciate that more than you'll ever know, and so do a lot of my neighbors. I've talked to several of them. When it comes to the annexation, I do have just one comment, and I think that we should let Leighton take care of this issue. I think it should be their responsibility to figure out how to get services to that property, and they have a better way of doing that than us going up that terrible hill. You guys know how I feel about this. I've been very vocal over the last many years. We've lived here for twenty-three, and we've watched that hill change as we've lived here. And I think having that property staying belong to Leighton would be the best option for that property. I don't think we need to to provide services up that hill. I think going up the hill as least amount as possible would be the best way to use our money. Because we've seen that road crack and slough off in places, and I think the the least amount of use of that road would be the best for our city. So again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ten years old. Lynn Paul, South Weaver. Just comments on the annexation proposal. I like the barnos. We've been neighbors to them for years. We've got forty acres right next to them. The county thinks we can build houses up on there because they hit us with the rollback taxes. We've never ever figured we could subdivide that because the only way you can get sewer out of there is too steep to bring it to South Weaver. You'd have to take it around through Hillfield and go out, then go south and west around that field field to get it. In fact, we're trying to work with the county right now to put that forty acres in a conservancy program, so it will never be developed. It's not only the sewer, it'd be the storm sewer, stormwater also that would have to come this way. And I don't know how you get it ever anything with a lot of the ground up there, and it's not this, this, there's probably two or three hundred more acres. It's going to have to drain this way or around the hill through Hillfield. Anyway, that's just a comment. I have one other one. The road going into the school from the west end is in now, and people are starting to go through it. Somehow we got to do something. I understand that road is not going to be completed for the next four or five years or whenever. But there needs to be something for the kids to walk to school on besides the road. On the east end of that property, it's just weeds. They're knee high. At least put a gravel path down there. If there's a gravel path next to the fence, I would purchase no keep it clean, lace through our place up through there. But I just hope the city can do something so I don't have to go to the school board and say, we got a safety program here because there's quite a few kids walking up that, and a lot more traffic is going up there each day. There's more traffic going that that end. So I appreciate all of you guys do.
Thank you, man.
Paul, just one second. Is the YouTube working right now? Okay. Okay, I can't get it to to come up on mine. So I'm trying my phone now. I just don't think, I don't know if we're broadcasting. I'm just going to look on there real quick. Sorry, Paul. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay, we apologize for that. I think we're back online and going again, so we'll continue with our public comments.
Paul Stern, South Weaver City. A little preface to this is that I'm not going against what the mayor would ask for. Most of mine are, most of my presentation is A P of what has already happened because this had a lot of this information happened four years ago, and a lot of the people haven't been around for that. While researching the location of the proposed property for annexation by Barlow Realty.
You're good.
All right. While researching the location of proposed property for annexation by Barlow Realty, I looked at the Davis County Property Search and incurred some disturbing facts about changes that have happened since the South Weaver City general plan is finalized. Aside number one, a reminder is during the general plan development, there was a great concern against the road to Leighton concept that was voted down by an eighty to twenty percent margin. Aside number two, I made a public comment on twenty-one July twenty. See the, see appendix one on where on when the acquired road on when the South Weaver City acquired the roadway property. There also is a second appendix that is a repeat of the South Weaver City page on the fact sheet for the nineteen hundred East, which most people don't even know. On the current property search map, the city-owned properties are now called a driveway. When, how, and by whom did this name change occur? Also, since the general plan was finalized and accepted on ten November twenty, land ownership along both sides of the South Weaver City-owned road road land appears to have changed and is now owned by Barlow Realty. It's in excess of fifty-seven acres. Is this why Barlow Realty is requesting an annexation of a piece of their non-South Weaver City property into South Weaver in order to make the South Weaver City land ownership continuous? As alluded to earlier, my concern is that this could be a metaphorical camel's head into the tent situation. Wherein, wherein, once a camel gets his head in, he finally gets fully into the tent and takes it over. In this case, it would correlate with the possible development of the road to Leighton, which South Weaver City residents have shown several times that they are opposed to being developed. Denying the annexation request would preclude the development of the road to Leighton as South Weaver Cities have shown several times. I would also like to know when these changes occurred over the past four plus years and who requested the changes. If needed, I would suggest that South Weaver City file a grammar request with Davis County to provide a history of the who, when, and why these changes were made. The second page of the packet that I have shows the Davis County Property Search Map where it clearly indicates that the city-owned road is now considered a driveway. The appendix one, as I mentioned earlier, is my comment from the city council meeting on twenty-one July of twenty. And it shows the ownership being South Weaver City for that entire, entire roadway. And appendix number two came from the South Weaver City website, which is the nineteen hundred East fact sheet that goes into detail of many of the questions that citizens were asking at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Michael Grant, twenty-six, twenty-two, Dear Run Drive. My concerns are regarding the general plan. Two weeks ago, when we met here at the city council, I had asked, when are we going to have public opine on general plan? Blair was kind enough to say that that's something that needs to be done, but we don't have a timeframe on it yet. And I think I think we, the public, need like six-month lead time to know when is it happening? Is it happening in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? And if I get to know, or if we get to know six months ahead of time, then let's say Country Fair Days, we can hand out flyers, we can start talking to people that we have, that's something that needs to be done. Remember, four or five years ago, when we had the general plan, Mayor Joe had gotten it done, and it took a lot of effort for people to get involved. I mean, we can see how many people attend here on a regular basis or involved. To get people to opine to their viewpoint on the general plan is not easy. Then, for some reason, it had to be done all over again a second time. And the big issue over there in that general plan was the South Bench Drive, the road to Leighton, and now here it shows up on the map. That's why I think everybody's fired up. And yes, three parties would be involved in it, but the third party, the public, if they get four weeks to opine on it or six weeks to opine on it, and they are not aware or involved, that's a lot of heavy lift. That's why I think maybe even if it's, if you have the general plan on the plan to be opined on in twenty twenty-five, announce it now. You don't have to announce the exact month so that we can start talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mike Paul, South Weaver. I missed Rod's, Mayor Westbrook's opening comments. I just picked up the part where he says, trust us to do what's right for the city, for the people, and for the developer, and not all the time. Does, do I feel like the city does exactly what's best for the people? And that's, we elect you, but not all the time. So anyway, I also disagree with Brett Paul. I don't think that we should ask the developer to do a a study on the environmental aspects of it because it's not our land, and it shouldn't be part of South Weaver. There's no reason for us to be discussing this again and again and again. The land isn't ours to worry about, so the developer can do what they would like, but it shouldn't be with the assistance or support of South Weaver considering an annexation. I think you've all heard that well over the years. And so to allow them to come in and speak, I guess, is their right, maybe. But it's also your responsibility to make sure that the discussion doesn't go any further than this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Then we'll have the presentation by Bartle Properties. Someone is here to represent them. Thank you for coming, and the time is yours.
Zach Hartman, Augden. You guys have the one map we sent over, the annexation. Thanks, Lisa. So this was exciting. I haven't had this much energy coming to South Weaver since I came here as a Laker to fight you guys.
He did.
Just by give a little clarity. So Barlow's have been a member of the community for a long, long time, and they're not gonna, I'm the hired representative. I'm with land advisors. And if you, if you look through my background, I represented, I don't know if it has any value because it's kind of landmark. But I can see how it's valued to the community for a park. So I'm moving around a little bit, but I just think this has, from a high level, my hope was my brain is telling me this is cul-de-sac Leighton, or it's cul-de-sac South Weaver, right? And I like cul-de-sac South Weaver best, but I'm comfortable with both. On the pollution side, we're super excited about that. We'll start through that process and kind of figure out, you know, what the responsible parties are from conservation side. That's a big part of a lot of the deals we do. So if that is part of the program, you know, that's something we'll look into. But I think, I think for the residents, for the council, my thought is cul-de-sac Weaver, you know, South Weaver or cul-de-sac. And if you go to the maps, okay, if I walk over here, it makes sense. So you see how the general plan has some overlap here, right? So Leighton thinks they're going to go to here, and you think you're going to go to here. And the county is just like rattling, right? That's kind of the way of the land. So it makes a lot of sense in my mind for this to be the park. It makes a lot of sense for their biking trails and use of open space here. And then put nice housing here that is either private and gated and comes down here, or that it's closed off and everybody exits this way. Doesn't really, I don't really mind one way or the other. If there's physical or other limitations that don't allow residential use, that happens, and then we'll, you know, then we go a different direction, right? But in my mind, putting together this kind of style industrial housing could make sense here, but it requires a lot of masterwork, which in my mind is harder for the local family to fund and put together. So you end up selling to larger funds and, you know, different people that are not, you're not building the community, you are using outside money to, you know, to finish projects, right? Whether I go through Leighton or South Weaver. So like I said, I came here with more questions than answers, and I apologize for that. But it'd be kind of good to get your feedback if you guys thought, because, because like it's the road to Leighton, like when I started digging down it, it just seems like that's a a nonstarter, other than from an EMS and fire safety side. Like, that makes a lot of sense there just to get trucks from all sides to access. It doesn't mean the public needs to have that access. But I think for, for everybody that would be, you know, for services, I think that's a big deal. And so my hope of out of the meeting was, if I could get a vibe, you know, if I'm getting the Heisman, am I going to cul-de-sac Leighton? Am I going to cul-de-sac South Weaver? Do you guys care about the park? You just wanted to stay like it is and be left alone? All those things are helpful for me and how we come forward and plan. But if you kind of look through the track record of the projects we've done as a company, you know, I, my family came here with hand cards, right? I'm not going anywhere. And so like, next time I come here after we've done a project, I would hope that there'd be more credibility for previous, for past performance. Work on my voice. It's kind of creepy. Yeah, that's great. Well, anyway, that was, that's kind of me bouncing around. If there's any feedback you guys want to give me and any thoughts you had, or that's what you expected. I wasn't just going to come here and say, here's a row of houses that you don't want, a situation you don't want. The goal is, do you want to have control over it and therefore participate in the process, or do you want to hang me the Heisman? And I'm comfortable with both answers, right? So I think there's been a lot of changes in the state since COVID in the amount of people that have moved here. And it's more about trying to connect these last open parcels of land that match with the community we're used to living in, I think, is the challenge of all of us being here. And so I'm open to any ideas and, you know, things we've missed. It was good to hear everybody speak before, because there's four or five items that we hadn't heard of or that need to be addressed, and that'll be, you know, something we'll cover depending on if you guys want us here or not. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Before you sit down, I do have a couple of questions for you. First one is, you said that you would prefer cul-de-sac going into South Weaver. Why South Weaver instead of Leighton? Just wondering.
What is the house worth in South Weaver? What is the house worth in Leighton, you know, one street over? It's about a double delta. It costs me the same to build the same house. From a personal perspective, I like your dollars, right? Such an honest answer.
I was just wondering, because I keep on looking at the property up there, and honestly, I would love to have that whole thing developed. It would end a lot of tension that's been in this city for way too long.
For sure.
And so getting something up there short of an orphanage, I think a huge city complex or not a city complex, a residential area up there of homes would, would be a great protection for everyone down here, and we could finally put this whole road to rest. So yeah, that's why I was interested in is there a cheaper way for you going to Leighton or going to South Weaver? I mean, I, I know a lot of it goes on to the city. I mean, I, I know a lot of it goes on to the city, but
The math, the math kind of doesn't, the math is the scale of the project, right? So like, if we do residential, I don't have to bring in private equity. I don't have to go to the coast and beg for dollars, right? I can do this in town, I can do with the Barlow budget, and I can kind of, and the family doesn't have to give up control, right? Until we get to the final house, we're kind of done, right? And those are, I like that, especially when we're coming here saying, hey, trust us that this will be this, right? You know, if we go, and I'm, and we're a fan of this, we do a lot of this. If we do large scale, then, you know, different money typically comes to town, right? And so, you know, once you get north of eighty million bucks on the build, which, you know, any of these larger buildings are over that, you're, you're talking larger dollars. So we're, we're happy with both outcomes, right? I would say my preference is to go residential, just because it makes more sense because of the geography of the land, right? We have to go up there and do a lot of disturbance. But, you know, being next to a landfill and being next to the base, residential is a harder needle to thread, but I think it fits better and what, you know, if you actually could walk that upper piece, it doesn't feel like it should be industrial. It feels like you could have, you know, a couple of nice rows of houses up there, and it would be a nice add to the community, right?
And is that what you're more geared towards is, when you say residential homes? Or are you looking for complex, high density? Once you kind of, any, any direction? I mean, obviously, the higher density it is, the more money you guys make.
But not, not true. So, so, so up until June of 2022, you'd be right. But with the increasing of interest rates, if I build, you know, a ninety million dollar complex, that's an apartment building, I go and I spent three years spending that money, and I don't get a dime for three years. And with interest rates being high single digits, it's really hard to make a yield. Where housing, we've got a pretty big shortage right now. I can turn that, you know, six to eight months. And so from a, from just, I'm doing true math, it's fifty fifty right now. For rent's kind of dead for a minute till rates change. I don't think rates are going to change for a couple of years. I think we're kind of stuck into this. And so if I have, if I, if you, if I could have waved a magic wand, I'd do nice housing on the lots that could use it. Or gee, you know, for, for the physical geography of the land, I could do walkout basements and make them nice, make big yards. And then the parts where it lends itself to, you know, meadows and flat ground, you know, it'd be nice to do some courtyard patio homes, maybe fifty-five and older plus. Townhomes, I'm like fifty fifty on, because just depends on the layout. And then apartments, maybe we'd want to do a piece of that if it made sense. But we honestly, I don't care enough about apartments to, to lose chips if we were like debating it, right?
And I, how much of the land up there are we talking about? Do you know how many?
We're like two hundred and eighty acres.
Okay.
If you count all the parcels, yeah. And all the different ownerships and all the it's basically your donut, it's the donut hole, right?
Yeah.
It's what's left. And so, you know, I, some of it, you know, just understanding the operations is gonna go to landfill buffer, is my guess, but I don't have to do that. And then some of it, I think it makes sense with the two golf courses up there to kind of use that and tie it in for, for benefit and for trails and different things. But, you know, I understand the connectivity road issue, right? And so if I'm gonna do a cul-de-sac South Weaver, I kind of got to create a physical barrier or a park that makes it so cars aren't coming across, right? So that's, the question is how do we plan that? And I think it actually lends itself pretty well, just to the way that the park works.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Present?
I don't know if they have any questions for, for him directly, but if they have some questions, we're gonna have a
Okay, yeah, we'll talk. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
I appreciate it. We've asked our fire chief here tonight, and I'd like for him to come up if he would, and give his thoughts on this and
Thanks, Mayor. I didn't know if I was gonna get a chance to talk or not, but uh, to me, there's multiple different aspects to this project. Some good, some bad. Anytime we can have multiple access and egress points into the city, obviously, that's a benefit for emergency services. The flip side on this specific property is, especially with the cul-de-sac aspect being mentioned, if, if it's a dead end, he's, it will be capped at thirty homes, period, end of story. So that's just one part of fire code that needs to be understood, is once you go past thirty homes, you have to have multiple access and egress points. So that's going to be a big part of this development that would need to be considered. And then from a pure safety standpoint, if we build, even if it's capped at thirty homes up there, outside of east of eighty-nine, the South Bench Hill scares me to death. And to put homes up into that area with limited access up into that area, I think we're asking for trouble. But I think we've been lucky that we haven't had any major fires on that South Bench in decades. At least I can't remember when there's been one. So there's lots of dead vegetation, lots of dead trees up there. And, and with the grade of that hill, if a fire starts on that South Bench, especially closer to eighty-nine, Leighton's gonna be in a world of hurt, because you're gonna have forty to sixty foot flame lengths coming up over the top of that hill. And without seeing a layout of where the homes and stuff are going to be positioned, it's hard for me to talk about super specifics. But I know once we're reaching those flame lengths on that hill, it's gonna be almost difficult for us, even harder for us to get up there and access. And I know the developer mentioned that we would, they would look at providing some other means of access and egress for emergency service vehicles. But even then, the roads have to meet current fire code as far as the rating standard width and then grade. And so there's lots of this project that makes me nervous, the, and, and if it is just the cul-de-sac option, he's limited at thirty, and I don't know if being limited to thirty even makes it a viable project for him anymore. But there's lots more to it, but that's kind of the big point for fire. Do you have any further questions for me?
What is, do you know what the road grade is?
For, you might know that better than me. I was
There's a, there's a section, the steepest part is close to fourteen percent.
Yeah. I mean, you've mentioned fire, does fire code have a specific grade?
Yes.
They recommend, or they say?
Yes, I didn't have it memorized offhand, but I
That's the question.
Pull it up for you.
In the fire code?
What a code, what grade is for a standard road?
Well, in, we, we are limited to ten percent unless you're in, in sensitive lands, which this would be. And then I believe it allows up to twelve percent for a, for a public road. So if, if that road was to be used and to meet those requirements, there, you know, there's, there's a portion that would have to be regraded to meet that grade.
Yeah. So I just pulled up fire code. It's eight percent. Grades up to twelve percent are allowable with approval of the fire chief and the city engineer.
Okay.
So we already have, we've already had one issue this summer accessing an emergency due to a grade in town that made it impossible for us to get our ambulance up to, and we had to bring the people down a different way. And so that's just one more thing to be thinking about.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Derek. Okay, we'll open up to the council, see how you feel. Jeremy, you said you had some questions?
Yeah, so I, I kind of fall in the same category as Joel, where it'd be nice to do something up there to kind of put this all to rest. But I appreciate you inviting the fire, fire chief here, because that was one of my questions is fire access. Because one of the things I remember hearing is, would it even be possible that the truck up there? If it was too, too steep, so obviously that's something we'd have to remedy if we move forward or anything. So that was good to hear. The other thing I, I hear most from the residents is the biggest, one of the biggest concerns is the direct access to Leighton. So I think if, if we were to move forward with something, it'd have to be something around a cul-de-sac idea to where there is no way to get into Leighton from that, from that property. And then I don't think it was brought up tonight, or maybe the, the lady, I can't remember her name, so I apologize, but yeah, hillside safety. I don't know if we've really fully addressed that, or if anyone has. Brandon, do you have any data on if that hill has safety concerns as far as it moving over time?
Well, there, there's definitely lots of areas that are not stable. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna do anything on the hill, you would need to do the proper mitigations to make whatever portions that you're affecting as stable as you can. Where the road currently sits, there was, the, you know, geotech reports were done and in that area, it's, it's stable. But it doesn't have a lot of traffic on it.
Gotcha. All right, so obviously additional work would need to be.
You'd want to, you'd want to look into it further, but as I mentioned already, there's a portion that need to be regraded to meet the, at least the twelve percent.
Jeremy, when we had our prep, our general plan discussion, Jackie Leighton brought a lot of evidence for, she has a lot of information about studies about the instability of the mountain right there. So she's, and she did put her public comment that she has, I don't know if you saw that, it came right before the meeting, so it's okay. So she does have all that, if you are interested, she can definitely give that to us.
I think that's definitely interesting. I think, I think that's all I have now. Like I said, I think it's an, it's intriguing to think about having something out there. But I think to the mayor's point, we have to be cautious of what, what does the community want at the same time? And is it, is it going to be a viable project? Like how, and is it gonna cost? Well, that was the other question I have. The road going up to the development, is that the, is the cost land on the developer? Does, does the cost to build that road land on the city, or is that?
I know, it'd be on the developer.
Okay.
If that's, that's what they're proposing to, to use, and the city's okay to approve that type of use, then the, the building of that road would be on the developer.
Got it. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I mean, my biggest, I mean, if this was annexed into South Weaver, and I was sitting on Leighton's side of the fence, and we've approved it only as a cul-de-sac, so everything has to go through Leighton out of that subdivision. And they're getting zero property taxes from those people. Well, they're getting some because it's Davis County, but not to the city. I would have, I'd have a tough time being, sitting on Leighton's side of it with all of that going through there. I mean, two hundred and eighty acres, you said? Is that, that's, that's a large development, that's a lot of traffic. That's now gonna go down that way. So, I mean, I, I'm looking at it from both sides of the fence. I mean, if, if we were to accept this, we would, in my mind, need to be accepting it as part of our city. And I would have a tough time doing that with where we're at with the general plan and all the stuff that went through it and annexing that into South Weaver.
I think it's a good, sorry, I think it's a good call. I, I don't know if I really thought about the traffic wise. Obviously, if they're able to overcome the thirty, thirty house limit, then it could be a substantial number.
I mean, they could, because then the traffic's going out, the other egress is going towards Leighton. But those egresses are towards Leighton.
Yeah.
Not towards South Weaver.
You guys decide, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's the trick.
Yeah.
I think honestly, worried about the hill? You got enough land, you got enough stuff to lay the whole hill, I don't care, right? When the problem's gone, it's gone, right? And step it up and fix it. Or if there's a big enough problem, just stay away from it. And so I think the issue is, you know, second access, I'm not worried about, we've got plenty of options. It's kind of more like, what does the community want? Do you want it to fill and live? And the, the traffic would come back down from South Weaver if we're doing the South Weaver cul-de-sac, right? If it's a Leighton cul-de-sac, then the traffic's gonna go this way, and we've just become a vast utilities interval. In exchange, you're gonna pass for stuff.
So you may have to step back up to the mic. The mic's working just, because, so you're saying if you go to, if you go to Leighton and they agree to do that, you still need to come to South Weaver for utilities?
Maybe, that's my guess. I'm gonna, because the way it flows, some utilities are gonna go easier with you guys. And there's neighbors around us that own other properties that I think from a planning perspective, once we write the check for this site, every little smaller landowner is gonna wanna piggyback off our you know, system. Because like you said, the city doesn't want to pay for it. So the spell of capitalism, sounds like that's probably us.
We don't have the money to pay for it, so. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's kind of logistics I was trying to, if we say no, you're still gonna, I mean, you're going to Leighton. Have you talked to Leighton at all?
Yeah.
Are they open to this?
Well, pull the map up and show you what
I saw their annexation, yeah.
Oh, no, they're, they're, there's more.
Oh, okay.
They expect now they're gonna extend this roadway, right? It's a major road that extended, and it's gonna come down to Janet Park. Right? So, and you guys just said you don't have any money, right? So you're not writing any checks for any regional parks, right? So if I'm doing that, I'm gonna go about that by going to, you know, we've, we've done regional parks where we get it from multiple places. Because it seems like if you did a large park up here, it wouldn't be just South Weaver that benefits like that. Those funds could come from other city, county and regional things. And so I just, have you guys thought about that as a desire? Or is that just extra traffic and people coming to your city you don't want?
Hasn't been discussed.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm here, right? It's like, because if you don't care about it, I quit thinking about it, right?
Derek, come on up.
I just wanted to make sure from a fire perspective, I put all the cards on the table. This would be in the wildland urban interface. And just so the developers also aware that any home over thirty-six hundred square feet sprinklers would be required. And so just when you're no, that's me. But yeah, so I just, just, just wanted that out there also, that any home over thirty-six hundred square feet will be sprinkled.
I think you pretty much have an idea of where I stand. Like I said, I would love to just see it developed up there. I do not see how South Weaver itself can honestly service it. I mean, you've seen us, we're a small town. We do not have really the investment that we would be able to put up to that and then slowly get a modicum of improvement through the, the land tax.
Any tools we can do that, right? Like, you know, I'm not opposed to infrastructure and dollars, don't, don't scare me, right? If I have a new partner and we have a shared, no cost to it on it, then make it so I'm happy to spend.
As long as as long as there is no ability for a future connection. And that's the thing is that as you've seen and heard, it, it's very difficult to move forward with anything where there could eventually be that connection. And I know that you've talked, you know, about, you know, oh, we could do cul-de-sac wise and all these kind of things. And the scenario that Councilman Blair brought up is, is one of those that I could then see Leighton pushing hard to get in through the other side. And so to me, it's really hard to, to even contemplate having anything other than a beautiful development up there and a big ass brick wall on the others. Sorry, a big brick wall.
I mean, the brick wall would be seven hundred and ninety dollar houses that someone has to build it.
Yeah.
If that's really what you care about.
Wayne, do you have some comments?
I'm trying to think of an artful way in which to say what I'm thinking, but I'll just be blunt. I'm not interested in having any development go in there. It was designed to be open space. I believe it needs to be open space. So if your alternative is, is to make it a cul-de-sac into Leighton, so be it, from my perspective. I know they have the East Gate development, and I know they have a lot of industrial intents over there. The road coming into South Weaver or not is an issue. The hillside, its stability is an issue, the pollution is an issue, our ability Our ability to take any utilities and there's a capital issue that we're not willing, or I'm not willing to take on. There's no incentive on my side to encourage anything cul-de-sac or anything from South Weaver's side. That's my position.
We're, we're perfectly fine with the highs, but do all the open spaces we expect to check, right? That's the, that's the trade in my mind, right?
Okay, don't hear from the mayor?
Absolutely.
Well, that's about what I thought. We have a lot of people that come in and when we have developments, they say. We do not want you to develop that property because it's gonna take away our view, it's gonna be, take away the, the wildlife that we've had. Just, you should not be doing this. And what do we usually say, or what do we usually think? Well, about the only way that you can stop that is if you go buy that property, then it's yours and you can do what you want with it. I think that if we don't consider this, and this is hard to say, but I think if we don't consider this. We're all against a road coming down into South Weaver. I can almost guarantee you, if this goes into Leyton City. The closer they get to this hillside, it's not gonna take much to bring that road down into South Weaver, and that will happen. How do you control that? We annex this into South Weaver and we have a lot bigger say on what happens between here. And where it is improved right now, and if we don't do that, I'm afraid that we're gonna be looking at a highway coming down into South Weaver. So I don't know how many of you have thought about that, I go to a lot of meetings. In the county and a lot of meetings where Leyton City is involved, because all of the cities are involved. And all of them are pushing hard, hard to get that road down into South Weaver. And so if you think, and if you think taking that and letting Leyton City run with that, I guarantee you. That road's gonna be sitting right at the top of that hill, and is, what's it gonna take to come down into here? Not very much, and you'll see that road down into South Weaver, I don't like that. And. But I don't think that we should just slam the door on this and say. Yeah, don't, not, not in our city, we don't want it, because we're not gonna be able to control that, if it gets that close, I guarantee you that road will come down into here. There's ways I think that we can do this and, and all, all but put up a brick wall to stop that. But, and, and there's a lot of. A lot of work and preparation that's gotta go into this, but I don't think we should just say, take it to Leyton City. Without really looking hard at this issue before we turn around and do that. I think the other thing is when Leyton comes, what's Leyton bringing this way now, they're not bringing residential, they're bringing industrial. That's what you're gonna see continue all the way out, the big issue that we've had. Complaint that we've had with our citizens is the dust and the dirt and whatnot that comes down from Evergreen that's up there and everybody else that's up there. Putting residential up there, we can stop that. That's what I wanna see go up there, but we don't have any guarantees from Leyton City that that's what would come this way. By looking at this, possibly annexing it, we've got a lot more control what happens between here. And where Leyton's developed to at this point, so that's, that's my say on it.
I would just say, I think that's well said, Mayor, cause. I, I, I totally get where Wayne's coming from, but I agree with where you're, what you just said is that if. If we give the control to Leyton, then we have zero control over what happens. And then they can build the road themselves, and then we don't have a say, and then it's already there, and it's already done, so. I don't think we should shut the door either, I think we should explore what could, what it could look like. With, if we had to control over it. And, or at least have more say, maybe not control, that's the wrong, maybe the wrong terminology, but. I think that makes a lot more sense to at least explore what's possible, can we address all the concerns that have been brought up by the citizenry this evening? And if we're able to address those concerns, because if we don't address them, then Leyton's gonna address them. Is kind of where, where my, my head's at, so I'm with you, Mayor, and, and Joel, I'd, I'd like to. I'd like to see something come forward that addresses the concerns, address the concerns from the fire chief. If we can address the concerns, then, then I, I think we have a, an, an option to do something that can be really nice for the city. But I, I do think we need to figure out a way to address the concerns for the citizenry at the same time.
So what's our recommendation for this gentleman?
I didn't know we were taking an action.
I don't know that we are, we just. Have you got enough from?
Cause like my summary of this is like, if I can achieve all the issues you guys are concerned about, not with you, right? Like, go Leyton, button it up and say, whatever you guys on board with this, and do the three-party agreement. I think you'd probably make Leyton happy, probably make you guys happy, and I'm not having a pole maneuver. Like, that's, my brain is telling me that's the better move, is that it's, maybe it's a three-way agreement, because Leyton's gonna have the same feelings in this game as you're gonna have. That's, that's my new thought of today, like that after just watching everybody, and so. But maybe it's like we take a sliver of X number of acres, and that becomes South Weaver. And then, and that's where the wall comes from, is we just take a portion of the property and you create your own little wall. That's when you edit in my head, and just listen to everybody, trying to review the mechanics and try to.
Well, I'll tell you this. Don't underestimate the citizens of South Weaver. They're a strong bunch and they've, they've fought over this for quite a while, so you could actually. Come out as a hero instead, so.
That's what we're going for, right? We weren't saying, we weren't saying we're gonna force this on anybody, we kind of came here with like, if I'm trying to. Satisfy as many people in the community as possible, what are the buttons I need, do I need to consider, right? And so far, I've heard one thing that I didn't, like, I got edged up on today, and that was, it's open space, we're not paying for it, right? That was the one thing that kind of helped, you know, I was like, okay, nice, we'll do that to your front, right? But that's not spirit of me, but that was the one item where I was like, that's the disconnect, but that wasn't mine, right? I think everything else can be solved.
Okay.
Just, I have one question though, are, are you saying to us, Zach, that if you're thinking now, you'll just go to Leyton City and have them do that?
No.
See what their list of to-dos are, like, these things we care about. The goal for them is if we want the road, we want the road through South Weaver, they care about it so much. Then I come back, that's a problem, you guys disagree on this, right? I don't think it's a big deal to them, that's my feeling. So, I think you can cul-de-sac this out with fine, and I think that you can do. Something that plans the entire property from both sides, and have the landowner and both cities on board. That, it was kind of my edit, was a little bit more global answer, not leave you alone, and it more along the lines of. Your role is the wall, it's pretty easy to solve, right? Make sure there's a wall.
And a moat.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't really have to go to planning, spend money on engineering for that. Put that together, and put context, and put the title, and then come up with that.
Well, and if you're looking at the very expensive homes, I don't know if you're familiar with Pepperwood. I grew up down there, not in Pepperwood, I was one of the poor folk outside, but, yeah, a gated locked community.
Cause I would love it if I'm coming down to South Weaver, that's.
Twenty-one.
Can I do that, kind of Pepperwood to the side?
Yeah.
And then create a buffer between, and then go industrial on the other side. That's just, that's how I would manage it.
Okay, okay, thank you, we're gonna move on with our agenda. Okay, we'll go on to our consent agenda, we need approval of February third, twenty twenty-four minutes. As everyone had an opportunity to look at those minutes and is there any discussion on them, and if not, we'll look for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
In favor, say aye. Okay, next item on the agenda is a. Petty property, family property damage compensation request. I think before we start in on this, we're gonna have Jamie come up for just a minute if he would, and give us a little explanation on.
Sure.
How this might hurt, not come up, you can just do it right from there, Jamie.
Is, am I okay right here?
Right there, yeah.
I appreciate the moment, Angie and I spoke the other day, and Councilwoman Petty, her family has an interest in this property and this issue. And so she's elected to recuse herself from the conversation. To the extent you have a public conversation or public dialogue, it's an open meeting and, and she can be here like anybody else. And would speak as a member of the public if she speaks during that portion of the meeting, if you elect to go into closed session to talk about the item. Due to litigation concerns, then she of course would not be part of that conversation due to that, Angie, did I misstate any, anything that?
No, that's everything we talked about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I, I should just note for the record that I, Councilwoman Petty was really responsible and, and on top of things. With this issue and didn't want to do anything that would be a violation of the public trust or her role. It just so happens that there's an issue that affects both her family and their situation in the city and, and her duties. Can I ask a quick question, Mayor, is that be okay? Just a question for Jamie, would you recommend a closed session in this instance, or? I think it would be helpful, yes, I, I think this is the kind of dispute that can easily become litigation. And, and that's the kind of thing that's appropriate to talk about in closed session, then I can advise you in closed session on those items.
Okay, with that, thank you very much, Jamie. Dustin Petty is gonna represent the family, and so we'd ask him to come up at this time and take a few words.
Dusty Petty, South Weaver, as Mayor Westbrook said, I'm representing the Petty family. Heard a PowerPoint here, I don't know if you can, can you see on your screen what we're seeing over here?
We can.
Okay. So, just to give you a little bit of context, what we're talking about is damage that was incurred. During South Weaver's water pipeline project that went through last year, so what happened? We delivered, because we thought it was an isolated incident. So this first picture is just kind of showing you what we'd like to restore the property to, how do I move to the next one? So, the reason that we're on the agenda tonight, we, we actually presented Dave. A, I guess a settlement a few months ago, a few weeks ago. Hoping that we could just kind of settle it and, and get some restitution that we could use to, you know, restore the, the pond. And the, the fields to the way that they were. But because of the, the total, it was decided that we should probably come and talk to you guys and have you just decide. So, moving forward, this is a, a, a map just showing the, the progress of the water. So, if you go all the way up to the top left corner, that's where the city's water tanks start. And so as a result of this project, Weaver Basin requested that the road be regraded. So before, the road was actually graded away from the mountain, so any storm runoff would just slough off wherever it, it. It fell off the, the road, but as part of this project, they regraded it, so it was all grading towards the mountain. And so what happened was it ended up just collecting all that snow melt and, and storm runoff. And it channeled it all the way down, you can see there, all the way down that road to about halfway. Kind of where it comes to the point about, about the middle of the pitcher there, and that's where the spring is at. So, we went from having just, I mean negligible, almost no, no runoff leading into our spring. To just huge amounts, and we really started seeing it in September when the weather started changing. Move to the next slide here. Maybe. I don't think it's working. Oh, there we go, so this is showing from where our spring comes out of the mountain and the stream runs underneath the. We call it the tunnel road, but that's the road that's owned by Weaver Basin, it runs underneath that, and then it runs through, we have a hay field. And then what we call the north pasture, and then down through the pond pasture, and eventually to the pond. So, this whole stretch of stream kept getting washed out. And it wasn't just, you know, increase of water, but it was washing all the new road base that had been brought in. And a lot of sand and, and debris, so this is where it was overflowing the road down into the spring. You can see how much mud was taken with it. This is the same spot, just from a different angle. And then this is the stream itself, so you can see that a lot of work was done to keep that stream running. It had to keep continually being cleaned out by hand with the shovel. So a lot of time there, you can see all the mud in the, the, essentially, it's, it's just sand and road base that kept getting washed through there. This is a spot in the north pasture that every time that the stream would get clogged, it would just overflow. And then we'd wind up with spots like this. And it, all we can really do is just clean out the stream, and then the water dries up and we've got huge deposits of sand now. You know, in, in any spot that that happened. This is also north pasture in September when the problem started happening, these are much more recent, January and February. One of the big problems that we're, we're starting to worry about is, this is also. The source of water for all of the animals down there, so we've got cows and horses at the moment that are drinking this, and. It's really not good form, they can get sand colic, a lot of health concerns that come from drinking water without much sand in it. And this is right, right before the, the stream leads into the pond itself, and this is the inlet to the pond. So I want you to pay attention right here to the water level. We've got some pictures in just a second, the pond is currently drained for a separate project, that's, you guys are all aware of going on over there with Whittaker Construction. But if you look at the water level here. I'll show you in just a second, but the, this slide right here actually shows all the sand that's been deposited, all that light colored sand. It's not native to the area, the soil down there is actually really dark, it's really good soil, so you can see that it's, it's killing the grass. It's building up the, the soil in that area, not nearly as fertile. Okay, so this is where the inlet's at, so now that the water has been drained from the pond, that stream is still feeding into the pond, it's just being pumped out at the same time. So this is actually how far down, just in the last month or so, since the water was drained from the pond, that it's, it's washed out what was just recently washed in, if that makes sense. I actually have an associate here that has. Exhibit A and exhibit B, we brought some, some samples here. On, in the one jar, it's, there's a really dark, it almost looks like clay, that's a natural pond muck. It, it, it just develops over decades and decades of, of a pond being there, it's a lot of biological material and things. And then in the other jar is just what's been washed in, that's what you can see right here in this picture. It's not normal pond stuff, and this area that you're looking at right here. To my knowledge, in fact, I asked my mom, she, she's lived here forever, this pond has never been, it's never been dug out. It's never been. Enlarged in any way, until about five years ago, me and my brothers, we dug out the entrance right here with my brother's backhoe. He's got what's called an, an extender hoe, so the arm can actually extend and retract, it extends about twenty feet out. And he used that to dig out this whole inlet portion of the pond, so in the last sixty years, we've never done that. in the last sixty years, we've never done that, and just five years ago we did, and you can see that it's already completely filled back in just in the last year. So, let's see. So I think this is also covered in your agenda, but out, after our, our meeting with a few of the, the city officials, a temporary solution that was implemented was to put in some check dams on the road. Long-term solution was to use culverts to divert the water away from the, the road so it wasn't collecting all the way down the, the hillside there. Unfortunately, when Tonko came through, they didn't put in any check dams, they didn't put in any of the culverts, they didn't do any of the, the the things that they were supposed to do as preventative measures to keep this from happening. So at the time that we met, we decided on the check dams. And the city was also gonna have Tonko build a, a temporary berm where the water was overflowing the hill, the, the road right there. And they, they did put in the check dams. They weren't as efficient or effective as we'd hoped they would be, so we continued to have washout problems. In early February, we sent an email to Weaver Basin telling them the nature of the problem and kind of alluding to some of the possible repercussions if, you know, federal agencies, EPA were to be made aware of what was going on. The very next day, they put in these culverts, and we haven't had a single washout since then, so I think that we have the problem solved at this point. I don't think we're gonna have any more washouts hopefully. And so that's why at this point, the family would just like to be compensated to the point where we can afford to undo the damage that's been done. There's gonna be a lot of digging and a lot of excavating, removal of sand. We've also, we, the same time that we dug out the pond four or five years ago, we planted the pond, we stocked it with fish. And when we went back after the pond had been drained just recently, we went through with nets and we tried to catch whatever was left, and there were very few fish left. And so I, I personally believe that because of the, you know, the, the murkiness of the water, the turbidity, that it affected a lot of the, the animal life in the pond, and so we are seeking to have the pond restocked. And so that's, that's basically what we're asking for, is money for the excavation and for the restocking of the fish. Okay, hopefully I covered everything. Are there any questions?
No, that's great.
I've got a couple of questions just before. So my, my biggest concern was you're, you're saying that, so the culverts you think solved the problem, because I mean, a lot of it, when they graded that, it got rid of any vegetation, so a lot more comes down, obviously, and it's not gonna grow anytime soon. So the culverts did, that, I mean, that's my first concern, because you'll fix the pond now, you don't feel like there's gonna be more water coming down. Or more dirty water, I should say.
Yeah, so it's, so far, we've had, we've had a few rainstorms and some more, you know, melt offs since then, we haven't had any issues. So I, I personally think that it's probably taken care of.
And then currently, in the current project, Whittaker, I mean, you're, the pond got drained. Did they reimburse you for anything to do with that?
So we did negotiate with them separately. And so they've done some work in the pond on the, the other side. So the, the north side is where the inlet's at. That's where we're, we're needing to excavate and things like that. The work that Whittaker did was on the opposite side, closer to the outlet. So as, as for, for permission basically to, to drain the pond, they, they deepened that area. And there was other negotiations that, that went on, but not really related to this.
Did they give you money to put new fish in it?
They gave us money, but we can use it for whatever we want.
Okay. That's all questions I have. All right.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes. Sure, Bill, come right up.
Bill Petty, City, South Weaver. Dusty made a very good point on as far as the funds. We were given some funds, but if you grew up there, you'll see that the stuff that they excavated out of the south end of that pond, they brought it out, put it on the bank. And so we were given some of those funds to use for fish or whatever we needed. But it will probably take majority of that, everything we've got and more to haul those fragmities and cattails as pile up ten feet tight and fifty feet, sixty feet long. So that's probably where that money will end up going. But I didn't want them to think, yeah, that was earmarked totally. It was just given to us is because when they put that or decided to drain it, they did that because they would have had to put in a, build a retention wall to build the structure on the other side. And that's what it would have costed. So that's where that figure came from.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion going to closed session.
Just a second.
Just one correction, you'll need to note the reason for going into closed session. I believe it's to talk about potential litigation.
As Jamie noted, I'd make a motion to move into closed session to discuss possible litigation.
I still second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll step into the conference room.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I couldn't tell who seconded that.
I did, Joel, Joel Dills, Councilman.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully we weren't in there too long. We appreciate your patience, we had an excellent discussion here and there. And I think we've come to a motion that we'd like to present this time, so someone would like to step up and make that motion.
Oh, I'll let you go.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the city manager to move forward and negotiate with the Petty family based on the closed session discussion items and come to a resolution that way. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so we'll continue this discussion.
Mayor, can I elaborate on that just, just a little bit? And you can throw something at me if I'm out of place here. But I, I think because some of the conversations took place in open session, it's probably worth noting that that to the extent the city caused damage, it wants to be responsible for it. There are some questions about the events and what happened when, and then the cost estimates that I think David will want to get into with you and just figure out what exactly that amount is and then move on from there.
So I think it's gonna we're gonna need to probably go back up with the city and, and revisit the site with a representative from the family and see if we can come to a little better conclusion on what the dangers are. So that's kinda where we'd like to go from here. So that's what we'll do. So we'll have Dave and, and one other representative from the council will take that assignment on. And get ahold of you and come up and, and do that. Okay. And we'll move on. We've got one other ordinance that we need to pass this tonight, so.
Mayor, can I make a comment? I think that's a record. For the longest I've been quiet in a council meeting, just.
Okay, so the next time is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, title ten, chapter nineteen, dishistory dwelling units amendment. So we discussed this and I made some changes to that. I think we're all in line now to approve this. So if you wanna have some further discussion, we'll look for a motion to pass this ordinance.
I had.
Any discussion?
I, I did have just a question, since the look from last time. What was the reasoning for restricting the size on the exterior EDA use? We have it from a minimum of four hundred to a maximum of twelve hundred fifty square feet, and I just wanna know what the discussion was on that.
I was in that discussion. The way I remember it is that we didn't want there to be too big a building behind the primary building. And so when we brought that up as as a topic, Trevor and I've done some research on what the average EDA use were. And it was a range between twelve hundred and sixteen hundred square feet or something like that. Felt like twelve hundred would be the, be a better size and, and limit the amount of livable space so that you could have large gatherings or large families in the EDA use. I think that was the primary driver.
And we did look at different ways of maybe rationing it out or ratioing it out, I should say. Making a percentage of whether it's the home or the land or any of those kinda things, and it really just came down to we just need a straight number, and what is the number that most are going through? Would it overwhelm the property or the home that's already there?
I, I can see why a flat number makes it easier than having to figure out percentages altogether. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any to look for a motion then?
Mayor, may I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen?
Second.
Here we have a motion in the seat. We'll begin with a roll call vote from Councilman Alberston.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Discussion items, legislative review, Dave, would you like to bring us a follow-up on what's happening down the state capital building?
Well, we held our, oh wait. We held the very last LPC on Monday, yesterday. And the league went over a number of different bills. This is the last week of the session. They've been tracking over two hundred plus bills, which is the most that, that they've ever had to track. It seems like every year we say that, so that's not necessarily new, but there were a couple of major bills for us to, to be watching for. They said that this is the week to really watch closely for action alerts. You probably saw one today specifically for SB one eighty-five, the Building Inspections Bill, which had passed out of the Senate and was moving into the House. I know that I sent an email based on that action alert. I don't know if anybody else did, but the hope is, the hope is that we can kill that bill in the House because that allows for for builders to select their own building inspector if the city doesn't complete the, the building inspection within three days. That obviously is, is kinda the, what's the phrase? The fox in the hen house kind of an idea for sure. And so we've been, we've been pushing back on that as a lead for, since it came out. So we'll see what happens. We, we did that action alert. The main takeaway is watch closely for other action alerts this week if they come out, because there's not another chance for LPC to get together and, and discuss, so.
Hey David, real quick, I don't get those. How am I getting on that list?
Well, we thought we had you on the list earlier, and I will, I will reach out.
Did I get the, the league? I get the recaps, is it in there? And I just haven't seen it?
No, it's a different one today.
Usually the action alerts come separate, and it's on the exact same, from the same email address, like. Interesting, okay. Maybe I missed something. Alright, sorry. Go ahead.
No, if you're not getting that, we wanna remedy it, make sure that you're included in those types of things. There was, there are other bills that are in the housing space. The housing space has been one where the league has been really working closely with bill sponsors and with the Commission on Adding Affordability, Commission on Housing Affordability, and many of the other organizations that are involved in the, in the housing in order to try to have better partnership rather than preemption. In the last few years, there's been quite a bit of preemption, and so cities have said, please include us, you know, we wanna be part of the conversation. And in the end, there's a handful of bills related to creating new new home options. There's a modular housing bill, which the league supports there, which is SB what is that? SB one sixty-five, one sixty-eight, sorry, SB one sixty-eight. There's also other housing bills that are creating financial tools that are simply options. They're not required, but there's, we talked about the FIZZ a couple of weeks ago. There's also a new one that they're calling the HOPS, the Home Ownership Prosperity Zone, where depending on the acreage, you can, you can either designate that as a city, or the city can propose it to the HTRZ committee, and they could then approve it. Which is essentially a way to get tax increment financing for, to help pay for infrastructure. Both of those ideas would have affordability and owner occupancy requirements. So again, optional tools that they're, they're creating, so the goal that they're, that the state legislators articulated to, to the league in the meetings is there's a whole lot of homes, there, there are tens of thousands of units that have already been approved, but have not been built. And they're stuck in that kind of a phase because of financing and, and issues around being able to do that. So they're trying to create tools that might then help alleviate some of the financing struggles there and turn those approved units or allowed units into actual homes that are being started. So we'll see if those tools, you know, make a difference, but that's the, the intent. I think we're all grateful that it's not mandates, but it's tools. I think that's an important shift that we've seen in the, in the conversation, but.
Did you see that passed? Or are they still working on that one?
There was a third sub for SB one sixty-eight. The, I'm not sure if that has moved out of its chamber.
It's out of committee, it's out of committee, obviously, because all committees are done right now. But it has not passed yet, at least this morning.
I believe today was the day that bills were supposed to get out of their originating chamber and be able to move to the other chamber. However, this happens every year, the last week of the session, they suspend the rules. And things happen very quickly. Whatever methodology they want at that point.
Part of it is the, I guess, the Speaker of the House or whoever, they have it. Once everything clears committees and they've shut down committees, they clean the entire slate. There's no priority, and then he's the one that goes through and resets what goes up there and what doesn't, and that's why a lot of things will just disappear literally overnight, and others will be the number one priority to be brought to the table.
Yeah.
So that all happened today.
Speaking of things that disappeared, let's all cheer for a second. The two gravel pit bills were both killed.
Hallelujah.
Both killed, yeah. One of them turned into a study, which is actually a really big deal because the language that was able to be input into the study was specifically to study the effects of the gravel pits on infrastructure and ways to mitigate that within the city. So that's good language for us in terms of really studying the effects of gravel pits on, on local communities. And then the other one specifically will be pushed into the interim and have discussions. We talked a, a few weeks ago about the idea that sometimes the shot over the bow just to get attention, and then now we've got parties willing to talk. That kind of played out a little bit, so that will be a major, a major point of conversation over the interim. But the frustration that we've experienced over the last few years about not even having anybody at the table to talk to about this, they're now at the table, and so that's, that's a positive step. Obviously, we wanna be talking about additional abilities and tools that cities can have to regulate. And the bills that came out were on the whole opposite end of the spectrum. So we have a long way to go, but at, at least conversations can take place now, so that's good. So we have a long way to go, but uh, at least conversations can take place now, so that's good.
Yeah, quick question, is that something uh council would like to see? Uh, I don't know, posted, some type of story or some type of explanation? Um, of what happened with those bills, how they were shot down, and how uh at least we now have a seat at the table, like you said. Um, because I know how frustrated everybody in the city is about uh the gravel pits and everything that's gone on over the years. Um, I don't know if that's just a when we keep and. Be happy with, or if we try to publicize, hey, things aren't moving, it's just move slow.
Are you tagging just to post on social media?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Why not?
Shadley's behind the camera looking at me, but she uh definitely had a smile on her face, like, yeah, I can do it. There were a couple of bills that uh I think were important to bring up, um. Just simply because they're being talked about a lot, and the league did bring it up from a, from a city and municipality perspective. You probably heard about what's being referred to um in the news as the, the ballpark bill. The M L B ballpark bill or the hockey bill, both are related to um trying to create a district. In Salt Lake, in a little area in Salt Lake City, that could have tax increment financing and, and other financing tools. To help incentivize the construction of uh a major league baseball stadium or an N H L hockey stadium. Um, or an arena, I guess, um, there are some issues with that from a city perspective. Um, broadly speaking, it has nothing to do with whether you're a, a sports fan, um, some of the league. Principles are that taxes stay in the area that they were designated, so that. So that they can serve the people that are in that area, and part of the proposal, um, this is H B five sixty-two. The Utah Fair Park Area Investment and Restoration District. Is that transient room tax would be increased by about a percent and a half statewide, but that, that increase amount. Would then go to the district, so.
Passed today, did you see?
I did not see that.
Passed.
Okay, well, there you go, um, from a league perspective, the conversation was that kind of goes against our principles. We feel like we need to at least express that we don't like that idea, that um. Anytime the state determines they have a prevailing interest, they kind of come in and say, it doesn't really matter, matter about the local authority, we, we feel like this is important. So we're gonna do it, and, and that's a concern, I think, not just with the taxing authority, but it, it shows up in land use, and it shows up in, in other ways. In areas, um, it seems like every few years that comes up. Um, other examples of that, um, just as a quick kind of catalog, um, the creation of M I D A, which is a military installation. Um, that's a situation where they created an um, agency that would act as a municipality essentially for development. Um, around military bases, inland port's an example of that, um, all of those have had. Different nuances to it, cuz it's not always city land, it might be military land or federal land, it might, you know, might be. Other um jurisdictions, but in this case, um inland port and, and now this district are city. City land, and so it, it has a, it just has a, a taste in the mouth a little bit of. It goes against the principles of, of taxation that we kind of hold to. Uh, let me, let me do. One other element, or one other um, one other conversation, and that is homelessness. As a, as a broad category, there's a number of bills that have been talked about, um, the homelessness front. Um, H B four twenty-one, uh, fourth substitute had passed out of committee, um, yesterday when we talked. And this is related to um what counties need to do to, to address homelessness. Our county and, and the mayor's been involved in the cog conversation about what the county is trying to do, um, this is one that um. That would affect us not directly, but more indirectly, um, because of the county's involvement in it. Uh, one of the things that specifically is related to that, our county has been looking at creating a, a year-round facility. And an element of that bill was, if you had a year-round facility, you didn't have to have the specifics of a winter plan. Um, where some of the other counties don't have a year-round facility, and so it was, what are you gonna do in the winter when, when code blue happens? And it's, you know, eighteen degrees or fifteen degrees, um, so that's a kind of a minor, a minor thing, but it does affect us indirectly now through the county. Any other bills that have crossed your desk or your mind that, that you wanna be brought up here?
The water infra- infrastructure fund or W I F from Snyder. Um, it looks like this passed. Um, cuz it's gone back from the house to the senate. Um, basically, they wanna create a fund to ensure that our water infrastructure throughout the state is up to date. And modernized, the problem with that is they don't know how they're going to fund it, and it's all going to trickle down to the end user, so. It, it sounds great, however, we don't know how that's gonna affect our residents directly, other water districts and stuff like that. So it's, it's kind of a to be determined right now, they just created the water infrastructure um fund, so they can. Do some um. Studies, but they don't have an answer for it, they just are creating it so they can then tax us later.
Which one is that?
Um, H B two seventy-five. Oh, yes, I'm so happy, that eminent domain one never left committee, never left reading, so that's great. The eminent domain for the bond will show my child, so.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Let's uh, do our reports, is there any new business that anybody has first? Now we'll start with our reports, Dave, or, yeah. Slade, would you like to start?
Yeah, nothing to report.
Nothing? Carefree?
Nothing for me, I don't care.
Words we never thought the marriage changed.
He's just mocking me, um, we did meet uh at Code Committee today, and we went through. Um, a lot of questions on uh what kind of code we should be dealing with. Um, previously, uh, in the original inception of the Code Committee, it was formed to handle. A lot of the issues that was with the property, um, whether it was zoning or whether it was land use in different areas, but. Um, it was, it was used to kind of clean up some of the uh parts of code that needed refreshing. Um, since then, it has also taken on other areas, um, including everything from uh some parking regulations. To uh some uh different types of traffic, and it, and it's, it's kind of expanding a little bit further. Uh, we talked a lot about that today and are looking at uh retracting that back to just handling. Um, the land use and zoning issues, uh with a little bit of uh. Development, um, and the process that goes along with that, uh, anything else? Um, really seemed like it was more of an overstep and a. Almost supplementing the council on what laws or what regulations and ordinances should be brought forward and. Uh, which ones uh need to be worked on, and then to have two council members actually writing that, uh directing it, so. Um, one of the things we saw was that uh we are going to work on the land use and bring those forward. Um, and still have it prioritized by the council, um, and that way we can. Keep the council more involved with the uh types of code and ordinances that are being made. Um, last year, obviously, we had a lot that came down from the state, which. Kind of changed the prioritization that uh we as a council had directed, and so. This is going to be a way that we can kind of clean off our slate, work directly on some very specific issues. And move them, move them through the process quickly, um, that will take prioritization and bring more up to the. Uh, council, but um I do think that the committees do need to uh be a little bit more involved with council. And not just rest on two of our shoulders, so that's why we're bringing this up. Um, but went through that, and we're starting to prioritize the list that we're gonna bring to city council. Um, we've now moved to once a month meetings, so uh we should have that um in about four weeks, pretty good. That's it.
Angie.
The municipal utilities committee is going to meet tomorrow.
We are.
That's it.
Other than, other than the public works till the end, we passed through uh, it's like plan approval last night. Or the Thursday, last Thursday, excuse me.
Dave, do you have anything else?
Um, my report on committee work is that uh, I've been asked to help schedule committees for a while now. Email went out, please look at that as far as um responding with availability, March is the month of committee meetings, so. A few of the committees are meeting prior to the budget-specific conversation, which will take place um toward the end of the month. But please respond to that so that we can schedule those budget committee meetings.
Is everybody in the spot doing their respondent?
That's not my email, if it is.
I did it. I will tonight.
With that, thank all of you for your time tonight, or a little bit longer than we have in the past few, appreciate all of your work. What you do, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Look to adjourn.
Second.
A motion in the sixth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.